Good job creating business in an industrial park has begun. Over sixteen hundred tons of scrap metal has now been recycled from the site and master planning on the four hundred and sixty-seven acre tract has begun. We are now working together, better than we ever have, with local business partners, including KU, the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, and Douglas County. This collaboration of entities all focusing on business, opportunity, and prosperity magnifies our common efforts and enables success of projects like the Bioscience Incubator, which is now two years ahead of schedule and is ready to start the second phase of that project. As an organization, the city has and will continue to take specific steps to make it easier to do business in Lawrence. Lawrence, Kansas has been fiscally responsible and is a strong community, excellently positioned to take advantage of the continuing economic recovery. The prospect of creating more opportunities for businesses to thrive and locate in Lawrence is crucial to our continued growth and prosperity, which, among many other benefits, allows us to put our resources into important social and arts programs that we value so much here in Lawrence. Another area of emphasis which holds special importance to me is the city's environmental efforts. Over the past year, we've made some progress in this area. We've reduced the city's energy use, we've added environmental chapter to Horizon 2020, began an urban agricultural program, rolled out new hybrid buses, passed a bike and foot-friendly complete streets policy, and have increased our recycling. Over the past year, I've chaired the Solid Waste Task Force and became very familiar with solid waste and recycling programs. Most importantly, I heard from hundreds of our citizens about the importance of our solid waste division and the absolute necessity to maintain our high levels of customer service while maintaining affordable rates. I'm confident that the city can create a solid waste and recycling program that is economical, customer-friendly, and safer for our workers. After noticing a lack of adequate glass recycling opportunities in Lawrence, I worked with city staff and we successfully launched a glass recycling program recently through Ripple Glass. This program's been well received by the community and in its just its first month of operation here, we've saved over a ton of glass per day from going into our landfill. While driving on Lawrence's streets this past year has been a challenge, with all the roadwork that we've done, and the next year's going to be challenging as well, but our community has requested better roads, and so the commission has made this a priority. The good news is that data shows that our roads are improving, so the end may be near. Lastly, I have continued my focus on the Lawrence Public Library this past year. With the support of the community and my fellow commissioners, the renovation project continues to move along. The design program's now complete and the final plans are being crafted. A local construction manager's been selected and we're going to be breaking ground this year. I look forward to the finished renovation and increased parking opportunities downtown. I cannot express the absolute appreciation I have for my family, friends, and employees who've been a wonderful support system for me as I work to fulfill my duties as mayor. Being mayor's not a Tuesday night job, it's twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week a lot of the times. My work schedule often had to be juggled to meet city needs and my company staff fielded a lot of calls and scheduled a lot of meetings. And so, thanks to my great staff at Cromwell Environmental, they didn't really sign up for this, so I appreciate that. My family didn't sign up for this either. Particularly, I want to thank my wife Hannah and son Alder. They've been incredibly supportive and patient as I work to passionately pursue my goals as mayor and give back to the community. Thanks to Hannah and Alder for sharing so much of my time with the city. To my fellow commissioners, to have been selected by you, whom I have so much respect for, to have served as mayor this past year is an incredible honor. I'm sincerely appreciative of the experience and skills and expertise that all of you bring to all of our discussions. Without a great group of commissioners who get along, nothing could be accomplished. We have a set of commissioners who may not agree a hundred percent of the time, but who always respect each other. And there's no games, we're just honest leaders doing their best for the community. I'm genuinely very, very thankful to have been given the opportunity to know and to work with all of you. Likewise, throughout the past years and the year this last year as mayor in particular, I've grown to know and respect our city manager and city staff. We've got passionate, committed individuals who are working for our community. These are folks who believe strongly in public service and are dedicated to providing excellent city services that enhance the quality of our lives here in Lawrence. The city is well-served by this group of professionals. In closing, I look forward to continuing my service in the Lawrence City Commission, and I look forward to the future. Thanks again for this amazing opportunity as mayor. The city is in great shape and I am eager for the further implementation of programs and services that enhance the quality of life in our Lawrence community. Got a few bits of business to do here yet as mayor before they pry the gavel out of my clenched hands. We've got some proclamations. First up is to proclaim the month of April 2012 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month.
I'd like for the Parkinson's patients and caregivers to stand up that are here tonight. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and visitors. My name is Roger Lemons, I'm here representing more than fifty active members of the Lawrence Parkinson's Support Group. We thank you for this opportunity to provide some information about Parkinson's Disease. We are here tonight because April is International Parkinson's Awareness Month, a time to recognize the need for more research to find a cure for this debilitating and progressive disease. Between one and one and a half million people in the U.S. have Parkinson's. Due to the slow progression of the disease, the time between onset and diagnosis is usually between two to five years. It is estimated that for every person diagnosed with Parkinson's, at least two more have it but have not yet been diagnosed. Some of the symptoms of Parkinson's includes tremor, rigidity, slowness of movement, poor balance, shuffling or rapid steps, loss of facial expression, small cramped handwriting, softness of voice, and loss of sense of smell. Most people with Parkinson's don't have all of these symptoms, in fact, thirty percent don't tremor. The Lawrence Parkinson Support Group meets on the third Tuesday of each month at 2:00 PM at the First Presbyterian Church on 2415 Clinton Parkway. We are affiliated with the Parkinson Foundation of the Heartland in Overland Park and the National Parkinson Foundation in Miami, Florida. We distribute educational literature, hear speakers from the medical and healthcare community, and learn about the latest research and new drug trials, including those taking place at the KU Medical Center in Kansas City. The next meeting will be this Tuesday, April 17th. The program will be from the Lawrence Memorial Hospital about balance and how it affects individuals with Parkinson's Disease. You can call Mary Jane Clements at 865-2450, or myself, Roger Lemmons, at 840-9594 for more information about the Lawrence Parkinson Support Group. We wish to thank you for your support in helping make people aware of this disease in the quest to find a cure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you, I'll read the proclamation here and present it to you. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a degenerative brain disorder that affects a million and a half adults in the United States, with over fourteen thousand people diagnosed with Parkinson's in the state of Kansas alone, and whereas more individuals suffer from Parkinson's Disease in multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and Lou Gehring's Disease combined, and whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's include tremor, rigidity, slowness of movement, and difficulty with balance and speech, the causes of Parkinson's Disease that are not yet known are under intense study. The neurological department at the University of Kansas Medical Center has been designated by the National Parkinson Foundation as a center for excellence in conducting ongoing research to improve treatment and to discover a cure. And whereas April 11th has been proclaimed as World Parkinson's Day, a day for all to recognize the need for more research and assistance in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease, and now therefore I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Lawrence, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Parkinson's Disease and the loved ones trying to help fight the battle. And next, we have a proclamation for April 2012 to be designated as Fair Housing Month.
Hi, Commissioners, I kinda was told about this last minute, I didn't know I had any remarks, so my remarks is thank you so much for proclaiming this as Fair Housing Month. There's plenty of programming happening this month, including an event on April 17th at the East Lawrence Recreation Center, and then there's also a variety of different activities that the city is also sponsoring, including Earth Day Celebration, which is on the Saturday. So anyway, I apologize for not having more to say, but thank you.
No problem, I'll read the proclamation here and present it to you.
Thanks.
Whereas April 2012 marks the forty-fifth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, renter, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, age, marital status, disability, familial status, color, religion, sex, or national origin, and whereas the City of Lawrence supports efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing by working to educate all its residents on fair housing rights and responsibilities, and through enforcement of fair housing laws, including Chapter Ten of the Code of the City of Lawrence, and whereas the month of April is officially set aside as Fair Housing Month throughout the nation, now therefore I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, in conjunction with the annual commemoration, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 to be Fair Housing Month in Lawrence, and ask the people of Lawrence to join me in reaffirming our obligation to fair and equal housing for every person who resides or wishes to We'll move on now to our consent agenda. All matters listed on consent are considered under one motion and enacted by one motion, there's no separate discussion of those items. If separate discussion is desired, that item will need to be pulled off consent to be considered separately. Is there an item on consent that a member of the commission would like considered separately?
Five through eleven. No, just kidding.[752.04][752.04][laughter]
I was ready to do it. Absolutely, we'll do it.
No, sir.
Is there an item on consent that a member of the public would like removed, separate discussion? Hearing none, then I would like to add to consent, one hundred and ninety-one claims to vendors totaling one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and six cents with the addition of claims. Is there a motion to accept consent?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Amick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. City managers' report?
Just enjoying this evening's festivities.
A moment of quiet reflection after a long march madness. Be a good time, I guess, to reflect a little bit on that and then once again offer fine compliments to city staff, not just the police and fire, obviously, and appreciate the cooperation that we had from all the different law enforcement agencies came down here and made Kansas look good and not like Kentucky, you know? If you can't win gracefully, then, you know, what's the point? But also, Public Works, Parks and Rec, everybody who helped clean up downtown and restore it to its proper condition, so we pulled it off flawlessly and once again, super impressed by that, and way to go Jayhawks.
Thanks for those comments, I'll be sure I'm related with the city staff if it didn't work.
Yeah, it's truly remarkable. I had the opportunity to go up in the command center there during the victory, and it was very interesting to see all that going on, and the level of intensity in that room was amazing. You know, normally, Tarek would come over and smile and we'd be chatting and stuff, but oh, not that. It was super, super serious, and I'd heard someone describe it as going to war, we're going to war, and war's about logistics, and so we planned for it, and it was well-executed, and that's why we didn't have any problems. So, there's a reason we didn't have the problems, and that was because we planned for it and did it correctly, so compliments to everyone involved. Regular agenda items, first up, I guess those were some of my comments. Second of all, I just said it before, but it's been an absolute pleasure to serve on the commission and in the capacity of mayor with you fine gentlemen. I appreciate it every day, it's folks that I look up to, to have the honor of being here with you all means a lot, and it has been a lot of fun. We've gotten a lot done, we've gotten a lot done because we get along with each other and can vote differently and still, you know, walk out of here friends, and that's so important because if we weren't doing that, then we could never, any of us, accomplish anything, and the city would just barely be kind of moving along status quo, and instead, we're able to work together, and I think we've made some really fine progress, and that's great, and I know that'll continue because of the quality of folks that we have up here, so it's great, and I appreciate that. And again, I've said it before, city staff has been great, that's wonderful, the amount of things that I have learned and the number of people that I've met, it's definitely an experience that we'll always cherish and always remember as being incredibly important to me, and again, appreciation to family, friends, and community for their support and help throughout this year. Thank you.
Just one comment real quick. Some of you need to understand a little bit about Mayor Cromwell. I had the good fortune of having, Mayor Cromwell is my vice mayor for a year. Now, if any of you've ever noticed, I'm about five foot seven if I'm even standing on bricks or something, I'm not very tall, but there's one thing about having this guy behind you, you know, you swear an eclipse is coming. I mean, he's a pretty tall guy, but he is somebody who I have enjoyed to get to know over the last several years, you know, and being able to serve with him. And this guy, this guy, I mean, does his homework, he does the job, and he does the job very well. One of the things that I told him the other day when I got a chance to visit with him just for a second, and I think that this comes not only from me, but from the other members of the commission, we're very proud of the job that you've done, we're proud of you, and we appreciate the work that you've done. There's been times I know that you've been, felt like you've been hit by a little bit of everything, but you've done a very good job, and I am very proud to have you as our mayor for the last year, and the deepest compliments on everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That really does mean a lot, it really does. Thank you very much. Well, we have a piece of business.
Are we gonna vote on that?
We can vote if you'd like. We need to elect mayor, and I recommend Bob Shum for mayor, has served, you know, this past year as my vice mayor, but has a heck of a lot more experience than I do, so that's a little, maybe a little misleading, but it's, again, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I know that you will do an excellent job, and so I would nominate Bob Shum for the position of mayor.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Thank you for that. Motion's been made in second, are there any other? Nominations? Nominations, thank you for that. Motion's made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. Congratulations.[1139.33][1139.33][applause] There you go.
Well, stay standing.
Thank you.
My first official act, which is a pleasure, absolute pleasure for me, is to present the mayor with a plaque for his service, and indeed, he did give us fine service, and of all the wonderful things you've heard spoken about him, they are all absolutely true, and he's done it in spades, so congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
And put that in a prominent place where everyone will sit.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's not iron, I was looking for an iron gavel to commemorate my year of slamming it down on people, apologize to all those people. Hopefully, some of them are still friends.
Okay.
Excuse me one moment here.
Oh. Changing on the guard.
We're gonna do some...
Okay, so the first official action I take, or the second official action, is to open the floor for nomination for vice mayor.
Mayor, I would nominate Mike Dever as vice mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Amick's Hugh Carter for nomination for Mike Dever to be vice mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, that was easy. Easy's a lot to have.[1256.73][1256.73][applause] Sure did a good job. I have to move? Oh, okay. One more election and I'm out of here.[1261.73][1261.73][laughter]
Well, I have just a few comments I'd like to make, and I usually tend to go to the briefer side of things and a little more lengthy, so hang in there with me. So first of all, this has been a great commission to work with, be on, and I've been on a few, and I've had a very enjoyable first year, in fact, it's gone very, very quickly, so usually when you're having a good time and the work is agreeable with you, time sails right along, and it's been easy to work with everyone. I think everybody's been very honest, very straightforward, a high level of integrity, and I really appreciate the fact that we've all remained good friends, even though we haven't always agreed on each and every issue. That is democracy, though, and I think this is a pretty good example of democracy at its best, where we come together, we bring information, we all have different fields of interest, we all have a lot of personal information that we bring to the table, and we listen to each other. I think I've gained a lot of knowledge from the people that I serve with, and I appreciate everyone working hard together. So it's been a great commission, a great first year for this commission, so I would like to say thanks to everyone, so Hugh, Mike, Mike and Aaron, thank you for being a part of that. Staff, the quality of work that the staff presents to us in terms of written material is superb. We deal with some pretty technical issues sometimes, a lot of land use planning, a lot of law, a lot of lawsuits. We have a need of very good information and stuff that's written in a way that we can understand it and understand it well and get it quickly. I think the work that the staff has done for us has been superb, it makes our job a lot easier. When we need follow-up information, it's there very quickly, it's been very balanced, it's been very straightforward, you can take it for what it's worth, you can go either way, and there's a lot of issues you can go either way on, so I think that the information we get really helps us, and I really want to thank the staff, all the staff, for the information they give us. As a side note, I'm most afraid to make this statement, but in the first year of this year that I've served, again, I've not had one service complaint from any citizen. That's pretty amazing, if you think about it, not one single person has complained about the service they receive with regards to anything that the city does, and the city does a lot. We're a twenty-four hour business, you walk out your door of your home, and you're faced with city services and city activities, you know, you've got trash, you've got fire, you've got police, you've got parks and rec, you've got street maintenance, so that's outstanding to me to not have one complaint from any citizen. So, thank everybody who provides the service they do for our citizens. Mayor Cromwell, well, I want to congratulate you on a very successful first year.
Formerly mayor.
Formerly, as mayor, and there's about, as he read off earlier, he's been involved in so many things. Most people do one or two and kind of stick with that, but Mr. Ambition over here, he got involved in all kinds of things, but I'm gonna go over just four items, he's talked a little bit about them. First of all, the Solid Waste Task Force, a huge undertaking, we are pretty far behind our comparative cities, we don't have a really strong recycling program as yet, we're gonna have to wade through that in the next year. Our solid waste program is gonna change, it already has changed somewhat, and I think that's for the betterment. There's not a lot of glory in finding out how to pick up trash better and safer, but it certainly means a lot to the city. So I'm gonna rank that as number four, we're not gonna remember you too much based on your trash, okay? So, another area he's been involved in is sustainability, and we've made a lot of headway with that, we've gotten a recycling energized, the bottle program, we have a common ground, which is community gardens, we've had the contest with Manhattan with Watt Savers and trying to improve the conservation of electricity. That sustainability program is so wide and so deep that we're gonna see lots of, we're gonna see lots of merit from that in the future, but it's something that's an intangible kind of event that not too many people think about, but it's gonna pay big dividends for us in the future. The Burrows Creek Trail, I don't know how many of you have been out there, I see the Red Dog Group is here, and we've run on that a lot. It's a beautiful linear park, it's a most unusual park in that it starts at Eleventh Street and goes to Twenty-third, actually, under Twenty-third Street out to Haskell, and that is completed now, and it has complete accessibility for every kind of vehicle except motorized vehicles, so it's a wonderful addition to our park system and our transportation system, has the potential to tie to the south into K-10, which would then loop to the west and all the way around the city, and to the north down to the river, and back out to the west along the river, so it's a huge advantage for us in terms of connecting all our non-motorized walkways and bikeways and running paths together, so that's quite a nice deal. The library, now here's what I'm going to remember Mayor Cromwell for is the library. When he went out and campaigned, he asked people, what do we need, what's wrong with the city, what's number one thing on your mind? And the information he gathered from hours of pounding on doors was the library was insufficient. He brought the idea to City Hall, worked with staff, and it passed in a referendum by a good margin. So we're gonna have a new library because of Aaron Cromwell. Lots of other people are helping on it, but, you know, it's his, he started it, he was, you know, it's the genesis. So, that is a huge undertaking, and it's one that the city is gonna benefit by, we're gonna have reading rooms for children, we're gonna have more meeting space, we're gonna have state-of-the-art availability for all our collections, and I think of the library as our front room, it's a city's front room. People come to the city and they wanna know what is a city like. You go to the library and look around and you can tell immediately. We're so overutilized right now that we don't have much, much more capacity to offer what we should to our citizens in terms of the full realm of services, but that's gonna change, and it's gonna be a beautiful building, a beautiful structure, and it's gonna function well, so I'm remembering you by the library, and thank you very much for all your effort on that. So, you can see that I have some pretty big shoes to follow.
Yeah, they're quite large, yeah.
How big are they?
Thirteens, yeah.
Yeah, well, so anyway, I just want to say I appreciate the support of the commission, I pledged to you that you'll see fairness in all that I do, and the word I want to leave this with tonight is that you can count on complete transparency from me and the city commission and everything we do. I appreciate the confidence, your vote of confidence tonight as mayor, I'm gonna enjoy serving as mayor for all of you, and thank you very much for that honor. Thank you.[1742.37][1742.37][applause]
Mayor, Tom.
Debate?
I just wanted to say, I'm really bowled over by the kind words that I've heard this evening, it really means an incredible amount to hear words like that from gentlemen that I respect so much and have so much experience, I really appreciate that, it means a lot. Thank you so much, I know you're... Thank you so much. I know you're, you're gonna do a great job. You've got the experience. You're gonna do well, and we're all here for you to help out in any way possible. Thank you so much for your kind words.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, you know, I'd like to speak just briefly. I want to thank everybody for trusting me with the job of vice mayor. You know, this is, this is me finishing my fifth year now in a row, and I've been in the hinterland down here for a couple of years now, out of the, out of the main focus and gaze of the camera and the eye, and I've enjoyed it because it's allowed me to sit back and kind of analyze the commission we have and think a little bit more about the issues and not worry so much about what I'm gonna say, but how I'm gonna vote. And I want to thank Aaron for doing such a great job. You know, the job of mayor is, is not one that anyone tells you how much time it's gonna take to, to do properly, and I think Aaron has invested a tremendous amount of time in this job, and we've done a lot together, and I'm proud of the work that he's done. And I, I just think that as mayor, you stood and have, you know, the job requires, and you've done an excellent job of taking a lot of, you know, both public and other private complaints very well, and you've, you've, you've continued on the path that you set forth, and I appreciate that. That's, that's what, that's what leadership's all about, and I think it's hard for people to criticize you, but that's what you sign up for when you, when you're a commissioner and a mayor. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank my family for letting me do this job. It's, it's not easy to give up the time, but I enjoy this job a lot. That's why I ran again, and I want to thank the public for electing me last year, and now I, and my fellow commissioners for letting me be the vice mayor. It's an important job, and I will respect that position. I also just want to speak up and talk about the other commissioners briefly. You know, having done this now for five years, I've been really impressed with how much effort Hugh Carter has put into this job. You know, learning this job is really hard. It takes a year at least to kind of figure out what you're doing, but Hugh has spent a ton of time chasing ideas and getting involved. I mean, he dove in headfirst, and that's something I really noticed, and I think the rest of the public really need to realize how much time and effort he's put into this job. It's not easy. Being commissioner your first year, and he really dove in, and he's really been successful in carrying out a lot of important ideas and concepts and making them real, and I appreciate that work that you've done. And of course, Mike Amick, it's been a privilege to continue to serve with you. You made my job the first time easy as a vice mayor, and I'm hoping that I can do a good job this year. Mike is, you know, a consummate professional. He understands what Laurentians want, and he continuously brings some level-headedness to some of our crazy ideas. And I think, you know, when you, when you really feel strongly about something, it's important to get the public's input on everything, but it's really important to get the public's comment on things that they don't normally speak up on. And I think Mike is in a position physically on mastery to field those questions and comments from people, and I think that is a unbelievable form of democracy, and I really appreciate the insight that you provide to this commission and all the time you've put into it. And that leads me to the government itself. You know, this is a really strange form of government, and it's, you know, it's both a joy and it's also a pain in some ways, because, you know, we don't get to be in charge very long, and you have a lot of ideas you want to implement. And as Bob takes over, you know, I know that he has leadership skills and experience, so that what he wants to do and, you know, is going to hopefully manifest itself in a way that might not otherwise because you have that experience. And I think that's what you bring to this commission, and I hopefully that the money and the energy we've reinvested in our community over the last few years is going to pay off. I think everyone needs to understand that the last few years have been the years of us investing in Lawrence as opposed to tons of outsiders coming in. We have done a great job of doing that. The mayor and the commissioners have consistently stood by reinvesting in our infrastructure and our people and our community. And I think, Bob, you're gonna have a good position to reap some of those benefits and hopefully put some new ideas in place, and I stand ready to serve you. Thank you.
Just real quick. Mayor, I appreciate all the comments that everybody has brought forward this evening. Mayor, I want you to know that as I read through the article in the paper this week, weekend, I realized that you've already set the plate fairly full for all of us for the next year, but in...
There'd be plenty of work to go.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, I was seeing that, well, we're gonna have a busy time, but no, that'll be great. I know that you and I've had the opportunity to serve over the last, man, what did, what did we call it? The last three or four decades and two centuries, or something like, it's been a while. But I have enjoyed the time that we have served together and the amount of work that, and energy that I know that you're gonna put into this job, and anything that I can do personally to help, I and I know other members of the commission stand ready to make this as easy a job as it can be, and know that you're gonna take that burden and run with it and do a very good job for all of us. So anyway, thank you.
If you see me crossing the intersection at Ninth to walk on the east side of the street, I'm gonna stop by and talk to you.
You know where I'm at.
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to briefly echo what everyone here has said about Aaron, and really, I mean that. I'm not gonna go back through it all, so I know that doesn't sound as, maybe as sincere, but you've heard it all, and I couldn't agree more with all of the accolades. Personally, for me, I think that being a brand-new as a commissioner, you know, it's kind of special, you being my mayor. And I really appreciate the subtle things you've done to make me feel very much part of the team, as it really has felt like under your leadership here. So establishing that culture and, you know, doing it by example, I think has been something that's really been inspiring for me, and the whole group quite honestly has, because I feel like we've got a group here, you know, that folks have said it's really just here to try and do the right thing. There's no, no real agendas. So that's wonderful, and Mike and Bob are excited about the next year. Make it rain, guys. Let's do it.
Got it. Thank you. We're just gonna go ahead and continue the, with the wrap-up of the meeting, and then have a reception afterwards. Instead of breaking for a reception right now, this won't take very long. So the next time on the agenda is to receive public comment. Is there any member of the public like to make a statement? Please. You'll please give us your name and...
Good evening. Congratulations. My name is Chantel Lassiter. I'm from Topeka, Kansas. I'm here this evening representing myself and my husband, Minister Ron Lassiter. He has included or given the city to approve a license for his vending hot dog machine. We've been going back and forth with the city manager's office about some things, and I just, I was led to believe tonight that it was gonna be approved, so I just wanted to make sure that that was done and get a, you know, clear clearance on that.
Is that the one that's on the consent agenda?
Is that Hot Rod Hot Dog?
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, that's what I just wanted to make sure.
See, we have another happy customer here.
Invite you all down. I invite you all personally to come get you a hot dog or brat. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to the future agenda items.
Mayor, Commissioners, you have continued the hearing for the appeal from the Historic Resources Commission concerning the proposed project at 900 New Hampshire to next Tuesday. There's still, still some work to be done, but that is our plan, is to have that on the agenda next week. And I'll be talking with you also, Mayor, about whether or not we've got the opportunity to get the briefing from KDOT and our consultant. I think the Metropolitan Planning Organization has already seen this transportation plan for US 40 and K-10. It's appropriate for this group to receive it as well. This is also, it's timely in that we are looking at the northwest corner of that intersection in regards to the regional recreation facility, so we want to be sure and get that to you. We'll have to make some judgments about how much time we're gonna have in regards to the 900 New Hampshire project next week. Then you see a few other items on the memo as well.
Anybody else for calendar? All right. Okay, are there any commission items for this evening?
No, sir.
None.
See what a nice, efficient meeting I can run.
You're doing good.
Any calendar items? Staff, calendar items?
I believe so. We appreciate your adoption of the budget calendar. We're revising that. You'll see that as you've, as you've revised it here next week.
Looks like we could adjourn to the reception outside if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn.